I'd like to call this meeting to order. Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Elick?
Here.
Ms. Karstharfin?
Here.
Mr. Bax?
Here.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Here.
And Ms. Sequin?
Here.
Would everybody please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Aye.
The Pledge of Allegiance. The flag of the United States of America. Into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to the November 4, 2020 Board Meeting. I'd like to introduce our group up here. To my right is Board Member Jim Bax. To his right is Board Member Elaine Sequin. I am Greg Elick. To my left is Board Member and Vice President Annie Karstoffin. To her left is Board Member Mike Gebhardt. To his left is our Superintendent Anne Slush. And all the way down on the endway over there is our award-winning Treasurer, Joy Klickinger. Okay, first off, I'd like to thank our Vice President, Annie Karstoffin. I heard she ran a great meeting and she'll be ready for the gavel here in a couple of months. So, thank you, Madam Vice President.
Glad to have you back.
Thank you. Okay, big day today. A lot of excitement here as we dip into the five-year forecast. I'm sure that's what everybody here is waiting for. So, Madam Treasurer, you want to talk a little five-year forecast for us?
Well, sure. It's exciting for me. I would like to make it exciting for everyone else, but it's hard to do that. But, thank you. I always like to start with the basics and one of the things is, what's the purpose of the five-year forecast? And of course, we know that it's a tool to look at our resources for the future and it can be used to plan the future for our kids. It aligns with our mission, that ensuring that each child reaches his or her full potential. And secondly, it is required by the Ohio Department of Education and the Auditor's Office to identify schools with potential financial issues. And the forecast covers the general fund only. We have lots of other funds, however, those funds come in with distinct purposes and reasons that we can and cannot spend them. I gave you a lot of backup and I am just going to recap some of that. Each five-year forecast merely updates the forecast that was last given to you. In this case, we start it and move forward with the forecast that you saw in May and update it from there. It can be revisited at any time, even though the forecast is not brought to the Board for approval except for twice a year. As a matter of fact, it is updated on a monthly basis just to watch for anything that's unexpected. I looked up what I said in May and if you recall, we were just a couple of months into the pandemic at that point. And normally, I tell you that the forecast is based on history, trends, and assumptions. In May, we talked about all the unexpected, things that were not predictable by looking at history and trends. We are still in those unpredictable times. And with any luck, this is not what the new normal is. The first forecast a year, the first forecast a year is the current year, fiscal year '21. Our fiscal year runs from July 1 through June 30. As you know, the closer the future gets, the easier it is to forecast. The numbers for fiscal year '21 should be pretty close barring any changes in our state foundation funding. If you recall, last year in May, we did have a decrease in the foundation. Hopefully, that won't happen again this year. My agenda for this evening is simple. I want you to understand that the five-year forecast is based on my best crystal ball. And I have made many assumptions that I cannot base on trends due to the times that we're in. And my assumptions are based on discussions with other leaders in school finance and, of course, my own biases. In short, I believe that this year, fiscal year '21, will be another unusual or tough year and then hopefully, we'll be back on track. In the near future, the five-year forecast will be a very dynamic instrument. I will be sending you a monthly update this year. Please don't get comfortable with the numbers you're about to see because the only truism here is that these numbers will change. Let's, if you've got your five-year forecast in front of you, we'll start with the overall summary. If you'll please go to page three. It's the executive summary. On page three, you can see our beginning balance that is assumed for each year. It is a positive balance through fiscal year '24. The second half of fiscal year '24 assumes the renewal of the 4.95 mil levy. Then, in fiscal year '25, the emergency levy of 15.26 mils is also anticipated to renew. We will need to keep an eye on our revenue sources and expenditures as we work our way out of the pandemic. But we do have those two renewals that will be back-to-back. The next line is revenue. As forecasted in May, this year's state funding cut equals last year's cut. I am forecasting that next year will return to normal. And by normal, I mean that we'll be lucky if we can return to the fiscal '19 levels of funding from the state. The next line of numbers are expenditures. This line has been complicated by wellness and cares dollars. We are able to move certain expenditures to these two other funds, which reduces our general fund expenditure, which is a good thing. This forecast anticipates that we will continue to receive the wellness dollars and that the cares money is a one-shot deal. Now, if you would turn to page four. It's the revenue overview. In May, the assumption was that the state foundation would be frozen not only for fiscal year '20, but fiscal year '21. That assumption turned out to be true. And by fiscal '22, I'm anticipating that the reductions will be gone and we'll be back to fiscal year '19 foundation amounts. Is that too much? Is it too little? I don't know. That's why we have an assumption noted. And the other thing to look at is the previous five years. The revenues decreased at an average annual rate of .5 percent. So, .5 percent isn't much, but even if you have revenues that are remaining flat and you have expenditures that are increasing, that creates a problem eventually. Okay, if you'll turn to page 13. This shows the expenditure overview. And overall, the expenditures are shown with an average increase of just short of 4 percent. We're self-insured for our medical plans, which has helped us to keep our benefit costs down. This year, our premium cost did not increase, but the employee share did increase by a half percent. So, a half percent wasn't a lot, but it is an increase in what the employees pay, which reduces the Board's cost. After this year, I have forecasted 12 percent for every year of the forecast for an increase in insurance benefits. Our retirement cost in that same line actually only increase or decrease with the staff cost. If you turn to page 14, you'll see salary cost. And those account for nearly 48 percent of our expenditures. We have collective bargaining agreements in place that give our employees 2 percent increases. I've continued the 2 percent increase for the life of the five-year forecast to reserve the money for potential step and salary increases. You'll see that in fiscal '22, there is a slower growth rate due to reduced staffing needs with the opening of the new buildings. On page 15, we have the benefit cost. That's another large area. High number. Benefit costs make up over 19 percent of our spending. The projection for increase in insurance is set at zero for '21 and 12 percent per year for the rest of the forecast. On page 16 is purchased services. This is the second-largest component of the district's budget. The largest piece of this component is tuition paid to other districts and community schools. Another large expenditure is transportation, but the largest one, the tuition to other districts, is out of our control. I mean, we can't, we can do what we can to try and hold on to the students we have, but if they elect to go someplace else, we don't have a choice. We do have to spend that. Now, if you would go to page 22. That is the required forecast format. And you can see that we're ending the fiscal year '24 and '25 with a negative. And just a couple of things to keep in mind. It's not unusual for a five-year forecast to fluctuate because we're not in control of a lot of things like the revenue at this point, the pandemic. And we have a lot of expenditures that we're going to have regardless. The five-year forecast is based on assumptions that can change due to legislation, due to changing circumstances, due to new leadership. And there's not one single thing that gets us to this point. However, we're fortunate to have had cash reserves. The forecast assumes they will be depleted before the end of fiscal year 2024. I have not anticipated putting any general fund dollars into the building project. And I have not anticipated any repair or maintenance on any buildings that we need to keep up and running. I've said in the past that the purpose of the five-year forecast is to be proactive. We don't want to sit back and just hope that the state will provide. The last time we asked for additional operating mileage was May of 2010, which is very remarkable. The typical, the normal cycle across the state is to go to voters approximately every three years for additional money. The promise that we made to the voters with the last new money was that we would make it last till fiscal year '19. And we've lived up to and passed that promise. Again, the forecast is based on assumptions. It is to help us plan. Planning for the future seems impossible right now. Will we need new money? Yes. Our revenues are not keeping up with general inflation of expenditures. The next question is when? I don't want to delay the question and keep, and make a deep hole. But I do know that we need to heed to the pandemic right now and keep new money on our radar. Making us look at the future is exactly what this forecast is meant to do. And the last thing I want to say, and possibly the most important, is that we are committed to being responsible stewards of all the funds that pass through our schools. With this explanation, I'll be asking the Board later in the agenda to approve the forecast as presented for submission to the Ohio Department of Education. And if anyone has any questions, I'll entertain those.
I have a quick question, Madam Treasurer. I think I was writing and I missed your explanation for the property tax decrease from 2024 to 2025 of 7 million. What was that for?
That is the renewal of the 15.26 mil levy. Now, it shows as a decrease there, but if you go further down on the actual five-year forecast, I have it in there.
Okay.
That's the way we're required to show it by the state.
Okay, all right. Are there questions, comments, Board members?
Is enrollment up or down?
The, the big question, we're about where we were last year. As we can, it is so difficult right now because of the ins and outs with the virtual and every, everything that's going on with the pandemic. The home learning, you know. We are, we are looking at tracking students right now. Denise Blatt's team is, is working on that. But the last count we did, we were down a little bit, but it was pretty status quo with what we ended with last year, which we were very happy with considering everything going on. We had, yeah, sure.
One of our issues with that was at the preschool, the ratios were maxed at nine per classroom. Right before the class, there were 18. So, right there, we normally have about, about over 300 preschoolers. We've had to reduce that in half. So, right there, you're looking at about 175 less preschoolers that add to our ADM, which is our Evercity Division. And so, that's not there either, which impacts our overall numbers. But looking at school age K through 12, they're pretty consistent at about this time last year.
Okay, other questions or comments? Madam Treasurer, I would ask, for this projection, obviously, I, I think the further we get away, the more uncertainty there is. But it obviously, it stands out in the years ended '23, '24, '25, that we're almost at $10 million deficits annually. Is that time to make a recommendation on moving forward besides a levy? What are your thoughts there? Is that time to start the Board considering cost cuts or what do you think? Because obviously, we're rather limited on, you know, our revenue stream.
Well, the, I think the first thing that needs to be decided is what level of service you want to provide to the children that we have. So, you know, do you want to increase class sizes to, and because the, the major cost, our major cost are salaries and fringes. So, to reduce, to reduce 10 million is, is a lot, is a lot of teachers. And I'm not sure that that's, I, I'm not sure that's attainable.
It also seems too that we tend to have these larger deficits projected three or four years down the road. And then, as we get closer, we firm up the numbers and we never get to that large deficit, so.
Well, if you, I could have brought some history ones back. Number one, I, I think what you're saying is that I'm very conservative. And if I'm going to err, it's going to be on the side where it's least harmful for us, right?
Sure.
And that's true, and I'm proud of that. Secondly, if you would go back and look at all the five-year forecasts that I've presented, you'll see that, yes, we're moving out the, the actual running out of money. We're moving it out a little further each time. However, it's there. It's, it's not going away. It's, I mean, I, I can't, I, I'm not that conservative. You know, it, it is there.
And for the record, cash surplus going into next year is what, about 25, 25 million, right around there?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Can I make one more?
Sure.
Comment? And I, and I've said this all along. Once we are finished with the building project, it's going to be a lot easier for us to get a leveling of the staffing and knowing much, much better where we're at with staffing. I will say that we had, had to increase, even though we're still down in staffing, we did have to increase to be able to service both virtual and hybrid some staff members. But we did hire them as long-term subs. So, knowing that we, we did incur some costs. There are districts in the county that have spent over $2 million just being able to service their, their districts. So, this pandemic has had a huge impact on staffing mostly. And, and I do believe we'll get a better, if I could use the word grip, on where we are once the pandemic is over and the building project is done. Because there are a lot of things that change with the type of buildings and the studios and everything that we, we have designed that will make the staffing much more efficient, as we said in the beginning.
That's good, okay. And that's also good to note too, that this is just general fund, correct?
Correct.
So, the building construction project has no real impact on this five-year forecast?
Yeah. It has no impact.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Madam Treasurer. Joy? Very good job there. And that will be later in the vote. Moving back along the agenda, I believe we do not have any visitors today. Is that true, Madam Treasurer?
That's correct.
Okay, moving along. Board member discussion items. Are there any items Board members would like to share today?
I, one question. Is the, I don't know if this would be to Heather or, what's, is the scoreboard fixed? Or is it going to be fixed at the stadium?
Yes.
It's fixed?
It's going to be fixed.
Okay.
We do have, we've been in touch with the company.
Okay, good. Just saw it off again last week, so I was.
Okay, any other questions or comments, Mr. Bax? Do we have any updates on the construction?
Nothing since two weeks ago.
Okay. All right, with no longer discussion items, we'll move along. The minutes to the October 21, 2020 meeting have been posted. Do I have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion by Board Member Karstoffin and a second by Board Member Gebhardt. Any questions or comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Karstharfin?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Ms. Sequin?
Aye.
And Mr. Elick?
Aye, motion carries. Treasurer action items, Madam Treasurer.
Thank you, Mr. President. My first item is to approve the five-year forecast. And that is my first and last item.
All right. So, do we have a motion to approve the first and last item by the Treasurer?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Board Member Gebhardt. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Board Member Bax. Questions or comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Ms. Karstharfin?
Aye.
Ms. Sequin?
Aye.
And Mr. Elick?
Aye, motion carries. Five-year forecast approved. Okay, any other reports this evening, Madam Treasurer?
Yes, sir.
Okay, moving along on the agenda. Madam Superintendent, do you have action items for us this evening?
Yes, I do. Thank you very much. First, to approve the payment of stipends to the group listed below. For, we're, we're going to do some end-of-course tutoring virtually and in person as listed below. Also, to authorize the master electric energy sales agreement. This is a yearly, and we're going into a consortium with the OSC, the Ohio Schools Council, to get the lowest price. And that concludes my action items.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the Superintendent action items? Move to approve. Okay, I have a motion by Board Member Bax. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Karstoffin. Any questions or comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Ms. Karstharfin?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Ms. Sequin?
Aye.
And Mr. Elick?
Aye, motion carries. Okay, without any Superintendent other, do you have personnel action items, Madam Superintendent?
Yes, just a few. First of all, to approve the supplemental contracts of the following certified and non-district volunteers. Also, to approve the athletic supplemental contracts of the following certified and non-district employees. And to approve the unpaid leave of absence of the following certified staff as detailed below. That concludes my items.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the Superintendent's personnel action items? Or personnel, yeah, personnel items this evening?
Still move.
Okay, I have a motion by Board Member Sequin. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second by Board Member Gebhardt. Any questions or comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Sequin?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Ms. Karstharfin?
Aye.
And Mr. Elick?
Aye, motion carries. And I believe we have a very special guest here today.
Yes. Let Heather introduce her, yes.
I guess no longer a guest, part of the, part of the family here.
Oh, I'm getting feedback. I would like to introduce to you Megan Baycheck. She is going to be our new varsity softball coach. She is a 2008 grad of Alaria High School, so she played under Coach Fenwick. So, she knows she's got some big shoes to fill, but she's ready for the challenge. So, Megan Baycheck.
Megan, usually, we have the new people come up and meet us and shake hands. We won't do that, obviously, though. But congratulations, we're, we're very excited for you and the opportunity. And you have big shoes to fill.
Yes, you do.
And Coach Fenwick has been very successful on the field and off the field. And we hope that you can continue that with our lady pioneers. They do quite a job in the classroom and society also. So, congratulations and good luck. Okay, moving along. Madam Superintendent, anything going on at the schools you'd like to talk to us about this evening in your Superintendent report?
Just a couple of things. First of all, would, just like to touch on COVID, if I, if I could. We, you know, as we know, the numbers continue to rise and we, Mrs. Higgins is doing a great job of keeping us informed. The robo calls come out at three, three o'clock every day, around three o'clock. If we do have anything to report, our dashboard is up. You can get to it on our website. But I just do want to remind people, as, as Mr. Cavell from the Lorraine County Public Health Department says, said and has confirmed, that the spreading is not going on in the schools. It really isn't. And we have had less than 10 confirmed cases come out of our school system. So, you can look at it on our, on the dashboard to see the numbers. And really, we, we have been doing our due diligence, keeping the buildings clean. Mr. Kokai and his team have done an excellent job, as well as the classified and certified staff doing everything they can to keep it safe for everyone. And, you know, I guess the biggest thing is just for everyone to follow protocol and, and keep, keep everything as, going as, as we can with the process. So, I just wanted to give that update. If anyone has any questions for us, please do call 284-8203. That's our public relations communications department, and we're happy to answer any questions anytime. Next, we had a great fall sports season. Mrs. Beck is here. We played 10 games in football, which was surprising, and we won three. And, and we're close in many others. We really are starting to compete, and that's great to see in football. We had a great volleyball season cross-country. Soccer, both female and male soccer, they did a great job. And I'm, tennis, I, I made it to a tennis match up on the hill. I will say, we had, we hosted sectionals on our tennis courts. And we had comments coming from teams that, other than one other northeast Ohio tennis court complex, we were number one or two in the whole northeast Ohio as far as complexes go. So, that was great to hear. So, great fall season, on to winter sports. I think they just had tryouts this past week in some of them. And then, yesterday, we had a great PD day. Shout out to all the principals, academic services, the teachers. We had, I just want to give a shout out to four teachers that did a great job presenting. Amanda Belcher, Troy Hill, Amanda Picorni, and Betsy Trump. They really took a leap and did a half-day presentation for our staff. And we're going to, we've been asked as a district by the Schlechtie Center out of Kentucky to present to, it's kind of a, a national thing, on our equity piece. And then, per Mr. Bax's request, the last board meeting, after we do that presentation, November 3, do that presentation, November 30, we thought we'd do something here for the Board. So, that's on November 30 that some of us are going to be doing a virtual presentation. And that's all I have.
Good. I will add this, that I've had a number of families and parents have complimented me in the school dis... Well, complimented to me about the district how informative and a good job we do on our, I guess, robo calls or whatever it is. But they said that they really feel like they are in the loop and know what's going on. So, thanks to Amy and Anne and the entire group that informs the district. So, all right. Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Okay, moving along on the agenda to Board of Education. I don't think we have anything on the Board of Education this evening. And we do not have any executive sessions, so I believe that's it for today. So, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll adjourn.
I have a motion by Board Member Gebhardt. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Bax. Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Ms. Karstafen?
Aye.
Mrs. Segwin?
Aye.
And Mr. Elick?
Aye, motion carries. Meeting adjourned.